On air.
Good evening, everyone. Seeing that it is 6:30 PM, I will call the April 13th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order. Let the roll reflect that Commissioner Anderson is absent and all the other commissioners are present virtually via Zoom. As you know, government agencies, schools, businesses, and organizations around our country are being asked to take extraordinary measures to protect your communities from the spread of COVID-19. The city of Burnsville is committed to complying with recommendations from the CDC and the state and federal governments to protect everyone's health. Current recommendations call for everyone to practice social distancing as much as possible. To comply with these measures, tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually by using Zoom. As Chair, I will be leading the Planning Commission meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to submit your comments to city staff Sarah Madden. Her email address is s-a-r-a-h dot m-a-d-d-e-n at burnsvillemn.gov or city planner Deb Gross at d-e-b dot g-a-r-r-o-s-s at burnsvillemn.gov, or mail your comments via postal mail to 100 Civic Center Parkway, Burnsville, Minnesota 55337. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to https://zoom.us/join and use the meeting ID 308737923. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299. For each public hearing, I will provide an opportunity for callers to speak to that specific item, and will provide more instructions then. Your call will be muted until that time. So moving on to the agenda, the first item of the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Does staff have any changes?
Thank you, Chair Henderson. Staff does have changes to item six on the agenda where the applicant has requested for staff to table it when it becomes time to hear that item.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda? Okay, see none. Is there a motion? Commissioner Roberts?
I move that we adopt the agenda as is with the one change.
Commissioner John?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? See none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Awad.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi.
Motion carries. The agenda is adopted. The second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the March 9th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Staff, any changes?
None from staff.
Commissioners, any changes? See none. Is there a motion? Commissioner Awad?
I move that we adopt minutes from the last meeting.
Is there a second? Commissioner Timmerman?
Second.
Any further discussion? See none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad?
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. The minutes have been approved. So moving on to the third item of the agenda, it is a public hearing for an app for an application for Eric Bus for a conditional use permit for an accessory building exceeding 500 square feet in the R1A one-family rural residential zone on a property less than two acres in size located at 2113 150th Street, 155th Street West, presented by City Planner Sarah Madden.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. So this first item is related to a single-family lot in southwest Burnsville, zoned one-family rural residential where the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a 1,200 square foot accessory building. Communication staff, if you could move to the next slide. So the zoning ordinance does allow for accessory structures over 500 square feet on lots that are less than two acres in size in this zoning district by conditional use permit, which is what this request is for. You may skip one more. And so the lot itself is 1.1 acres in size, and the existing garage structure is 741 square feet. The proposed structure is to be 1,200 square feet, and its placement on the lot and proposed setbacks do meet zoning code requirements. The aesthetics such as building height are also compatible with the zoning ordinance. The structure is planned to be 30 feet wide, 40 feet deep with a 10-foot wall height and asphalt shingle roof structures. The structure will also have vinyl lap siding. You can move one more. The building department has preemptively reviewed the application and has no formal comments related to the proposal. And the proposal will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or the city. Staff does feel that the CUP criteria outlined in the ordinance have been met with this request and are overall supportive of the application. You can move forward one more. And the applicant has also received support from neighbors, which has been included in the background report. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit request for this accessory structure. The item is a public hearing this evening, and I can stand for questions.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, see none. I will open the public hearing then at 6:38 PM. See, uh, but however, I did wanted to state that if you wish to speak to this item and are on the Zoom meeting, please use either the chat feature or raise your hand feature, and the moderator will put you in the queue. Once I call your name to speak, the moderator will unmute you. Then please state your name and your address for the record. Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, it doesn't look like it. So then if there is anybody on the phone who wish to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Okay, it doesn't appear that anybody would like to speak to this item. I will close the public hearing then at 6:39 PM. Commissioners, any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner John?
Yeah, this seems like a pretty straightforward project. It doesn't look like there's any real issues here, nothing to be aware of. It looks like there was some emails from neighbors, and nobody has a problem with this. Everything looks pretty straightforward, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other commissioner who would like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, see none. Is there a motion? Commissioner John?
I would like to make a motion. To, uh, I can find it here. I apologize. I'm trying to grab up the wording correctly here. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend that city council approves the application for conditional use permit for an accessory building exceeding the 500 square feet in the R1A district, one-family rural residential zone on a property less than two acres in size located at 2113 155th Street West.
Commissioner Awad?
I will second the motion.
Any further discussion? See none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad?
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi.
Motion carries, and this item will be on the city council's April 21st meeting agenda. Okay, so we'll move on to item four, which is to hold a public hearing for CenterPoint Energy for a Conditional Use Permit Amendment to allow essential services, the pipeline and related mechanical equipment, to be located at 11500 12th Avenue South, presented by City Planner Sarah Madden.
Thank you, Chair Henderson. So this next application for a Conditional Use Permit Amendment request is related to the installation of essential service structures of a natural gas pipeline regulator station, which is on an existing essential services property operated by CenterPoint Energy. So the property at 11500 12th Avenue South is 112 acres in size and zoned I-1 Industrial Park District. Move to the next slide. So overall, natural gas services and related pipelines were originally installed and provided to Burnsville prior to its incorporation into the city. So this site has had multiple CUP approvals over the years, which is outlined in your background report. The current proposal is related to an overall larger improvement along one of the pipelines that's operated by CenterPoint Energy, whereas this conditional use permit is requested for the specifically the gas regulator station and the above-ground equipment. You can move to the next slide. So improvements included with the project do include installation of new pipeline as well as some replacement along the line and minor rerouting. But specifically on the site proposed in the site plan, you can see on your screen, there are no new additions to parking. However, the access roadways leading to the new regulator station are proposed to be resurfaced. So approximately, like 1773 square feet of new impervious surface is proposed. So these engineering-related improvements do mark the beginning of some new cumulative tracking of impervious area to meet the city stormwater management plan. And you can move one forward. So additionally, the property is currently unplatted. There is a condition that has been added that at the next land use clearance, a plat would be required. If you could actually move forward two slides, they got out of order unintentionally. And so a key improvement with this proposal is the installation of 15 new plantings adjacent to the proposed regulator station as screening. So setbacks and installation of the evergreen shrubbery will screen the area and the above-ground equipment from properties to the south as well as the cliff road right of way. So with this conditional use permit amendment, it's necessary to accommodate the essential service structures. There are no foreseen impacts, negative impacts to adjacent properties anticipated with the project, and it will be compatible with the rest of the site as it has been has been utilized since inception. And as mentioned, with the screening, the setbacks and the installation will screen it from the adjoining properties. So staff is supportive of the application and is recommending approval. If you can go back one more slide. And so there are two conditions associated with the approval. So at the time of the next application for a land use clearance, a plat of the property will be required. So land use clearance would be, for example, further amendments of the conditional use permit. And then the engineering-related condition regarding that this development will be considered the first of a common plan of development, and the incremental stormwater or incremental development will be consolidated for stormwater management purposes. So the current new impervious surface coverage is 2,773 square feet, and future development areas will be added to this. So that once the cumulative impervious surface exceeds 5,000 square feet, the applicant will be need to meet the city stormwater management requirements, which kick in at 5,000 square feet. So this application is a public hearing. I can stand for questions, and I do believe the applicant would like to speak as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, any comments or questions before the public hearing is open? Commissioner Awad?
So I do have a question. What is, one of the conditions is that is a future plant, if they're going to, you know, further develop the property or do further applications. Can you remind us just what's involved in a plant?
So a plat of the property is a formal subdivision of a piece of land into a lot and block. So this property currently is not situated in that manner. There have been discussions from previous CUP approvals, kind of over the last several years with between representatives of the property and different staff members over time, where this has been discussed. The subdivision ordinance, as it currently stands, would necessitate a plat for land use approvals. So that's why many times when we bring as staff applications before you, they do incorporate multiple levels of approvals, the plan of your development or conditional use permit associated with the plat. In this case, at the previous land use approval, it was decided that the improvements were minor enough to where a plat was not necessitated at that time and was pushed down the road. With this condition, we're just stating that the next time they come in for a land use approval, that a plat would be required at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner John?
She she answered my question. I was going to ask why we were not requiring a plat this time around. It sounds like it's because of, it's just a minor minor work. Thank you.
Any further discussion, commissioners? Okay, see none. We will move to the public hearing portion. So as a reminder, if you are on the Zoom meeting and would like to speak to this, use either the chat feature or raise your hand feature, and the moderator will put you in the queue. Once I call your name to speak, the moderator will unmute you. Then please state your name and address for the record. And with that, I will open the public hearing at 6:49 PM. So if, let's see. Is there anybody wishing to speak? It's on Zoom here. Okay, it doesn't look like it. So then, anyone that is participating on the phone, if you wish to speak to unmute yourself, please press star six and state your name and address for the record. Okay, it doesn't appear that anybody would want to speak about this item. So at this time, I will close the public hearing at 6:50 PM. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Timmerman?
Yes, sir. Will you remind us, when we looked at this last year for their expanded training facilities, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but we did not have a requirement that they would be planted the next time they came forward to us at that time, did we?
At that time, that's a great question. At that time, the condition was included from a previous approval, which was related to the fact that previously, the discussion was that at the time of a significant future development was the phrasing. So with this, based on our current subdivision ordinance standards, we are rephrasing that to be the next land use clearance rather than-
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner John?
Yeah. Last time we, last year, I tried to go down to see the sites, and it's kind of a private property sort of ordeal. And I went down again. I'm not sure, is there, if we have to do work with the city point or center point again, is there a protocol in how we're supposed to approach that if we if we wanted to see the property?
I can defer to the applicant if they would like to answer that question. The, from a city standpoint, the protocol would just be to follow open meeting law, of course, but I'll defer to the applicant if he wishes to or is able to answer that question.
Yes, I apologize. Are you able to hear me?
You're very quiet.
Hi, TJ. Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is TJ Hyder. I'm an employee of CenterPoint Energy at 700 West Lyndon Avenue South in Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Great. And if you can answer the question?
Uh, yeah, I can provide the site supervisors' contact information to the city so that if there is any root need or desire to visit or tour the site, he would be the one that would have to set it up as it is a secured facility.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner John?
Since we do have you available now, I was curious on what kind of safety procedures are going to be in place. I'm sure there's safety things with a mishap a couple of years ago in Massachusetts. I'm sure that that's something that's always on your mind. So is there safety protocols or things to make sure that no problems happen when replacing this pipe?
Uh, yeah, contrary to what happened on the East Coast a year and a half ago, all of our pipelines are protected, overpressure protection and electronic monitoring, as well as engineered written procedures with P-stamps for all the designs. And we do have set measures in our construction service and engineering service manuals that give additional protocols and outline small checks, material verifications, welding inspections, items like that, to avoid any issues like you saw in Massachusetts.
Are those new procedures, or is that just something that was in place before?
They've been in place for quite some time. Okay, I've only been at CenterPoint for four years, but they've been same procedures we have been using. We have paid closer attention to the verage and the order of operations in the procedures, just to make sure that there's no confusion in the field when they're acting out on those.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Great. Thanks, TJ. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, see none. Oh, actually, Commissioner Roberts?
Actually, see none. I would like to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommends to the city council the approval of the CUP amendment to allow essential service structures for the CenterPoint Energy located at 11500 12th Avenue South, subject to the following two conditions listed in our notes.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, see none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad?
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes, and I just realized I failed to close that public hearing. So we will close the public hearing at 6:56 PM. And this item will be heard on the city council's April 21st meeting agenda. So the fifth item on the agenda is to hold a public hearing for an application from South Cross Commerce Center 3 LLC for a conditional use permit for an interior tenant expansion of a medical clinic used Lake Dermatology in the I-3 Office and Industrial Park Zone located at 14305 South Cross Drive, presented by City Planner Deb Gross.
Hello, commissioners? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I've been having some issues here. This application is for EFH Realty Advisors, and what it is, is they have submitted a building permit to extend or expand the Lakes Dermatology Clinic. The property is in the I-3 Office and Industrial Park Zone, and what they would like to do is, the clinic has really been in operation for many years. They would like to add on to the existing square footage to a little bit double, a little bit higher. Sorry, I can't. Anyway, and the issue was that the city amended its ordinance back in 2014, and we modified our definitions and uses because there were many different office type uses, medical office, et cetera, and it was confusing. And there were in different, you know, interpretations that were eligible. So when the ordinance was amended, and we clarified that medical office or clinic or medical service or clinic became the conditional use permit, there was a similar use, it just wasn't called the same thing. But what that means is that even though this particular use has been in operation, it's classified by the zoning ordinance as a legal, non-conforming use, meaning it was legal at the time that it went in. And the first clinic that went into this site was Norin Clinic back in 2005. So there's basically been a medical-type clinic at this site for many, many years. What they needed to do then is to make application for a conditional use permit so that they could expand meeting the current ordinance, and that is what is proposed. The applicant has provided information in terms of the parking for the site. There are currently 139- There are currently a hundred and thirty nine spaces that are onsite for parking. The proposed use would take or excuse me, the expansion area would take twenty eight additional stalls for a total use of everyone in the building of a hundred and twenty six stalls. So they do meet the ordinance for parking and there are still extra stalls available. With that, in terms of evaluations, this is something where all of the improvements are taking place inside the building. There will be no outdoor site or building changes due to this. It's just a matter of expanding, expanding the clinic and adding some additional facilities so that they can continue to have their business here in Burnsville. It's a longstanding business. Staff does not anticipate any issues associated with this use and we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit as requested. I can stand for questions.
Great, thank you Deb. Commissioners, any questions? So seeing none, I will move to open the public hearing at seven o'clock. Same rules apply. If you're on the Zoom meeting and would like to speak, please use either the chat feature or raise your hand feature. And the moderator will put you in queue, call your name to speak. The moderator will unmute you. Then please state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none. Is there? Actually, is Mike Whalen wanting to speak about this?
Sure, Mike Whalen with EFH.
Did you want to make a comment? Mike?
Are you, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, Mike Whalen with EFH, we're the landlord's representative. Twenty nine ninety nine West County Road forty two, suite two zero six, Burnsville, Minnesota. Just would like to reiterate Deb's comments that Lakes Dermatology is a long time tenant. They're active with in the community with different things that they participate in and we're excited to have expanding in our build.
Great, thank you. Okay, so it doesn't appear that anybody else is wishing to speak that are participating in the Zoom meeting. But if you're on the phone, if you would like to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Okay, it doesn't appear that there is anybody wishing to speak about this item. So I will close this at seven oh three P M. Commissioners, any other comments or questions? Is Commissioner John?
Sounds like a good fit. It looks like a nice facility. Thanks for joining us, Mr. Whalen. I would like to make a motion. And I move that we recommend to the city council to approve the CUP and allow the two thousand two hundred and seventy eight square foot expansion for Lakes Dermatology at fourteen three oh five South Cross Drive.
Commissioner Roberts.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries. This will, this item will be heard at the April twenty first city council meeting.
Thank you.
So the sixth item on the agenda was to consider an application for Lloyd and Darlene Wallen for a variance for driveway width to exceed twenty four feet and front yard coverage to exceed thirty five percent located at one three nine three four West Preserve Boulevard. However, now the applicant is requesting to table the item and I'm Ms. Gross, did you have anything else to add?
Thank you. The applicant requested on Friday to have this item continued due to some challenges with the technology for the virtual meeting. And he has given the city the waiver, which extends the review timeline for the application. So staff is, we have no issues with tabling this item at this point in time. When it does come back, we will have to re-notify people and republish. That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions, concerns, comments? Commissioner Timmerman. You need to unmute yourself, Commissioner Timmerman.
Thank you. Ms. Girls, as we get closer to that extension deadline, if we are still meeting remotely, I would hope that we would have an opportunity that we could help them with whatever technical technological issues that there are because obviously we have to meet our our own statutory deadlines. And frankly, I I think that this particular project has after looking at the background, has really taken time already. So I just want to be careful that we make sure that we do hear this before we get to that deadline.
Thank you, Commissioner Timmerman. Yes, we did get the waiver. That's what I was referring to. And staff would concur, we would have liked to have had this addressed by this time. We did reach out to the applicant to go through the meeting, you know, procedures and how to do this. But he is an older gentleman and requested it be extended. We did check with the city attorney and the attorneys working with this. And there will be no issues with extending this. If it gets close to that August deadline again, he will need to give us another notice or we will hold the respective hearings and meetings and have to act on the application. Thank you.
So I guess I have a question. How many waivers can an applicant get then when the city says enough is enough?
Thank you, Chair. The applicant can give any number of waivers. The way that the law is set up is that the city has a sixty day timeframe from the time we accept a complete application to process that land use application. If it's not processed within that timeframe, then the application is deemed approved. What the law allows for is it allows the city to do an additional sixty day extension. So that would be a total of one hundred and twenty days. After that, the applicant has to agree to the waiver. The city can't just automatically add any more extensions. We're limited to that first one hundred and twenty days. And we did speak with the attorneys related to this item and their suggestion was to proceed with the continuation and to try to work with the applicant as much as possible. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Comments? Is there a motion? Commissioner Roberts.
I guess procedure wise, I guess I move that we accept the waiver from the applicant at this time.
I think it's to table the item or continue the item?
Is that what it'd be? I move to table this item based on the applicant's request.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Second.
Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye.
Great, motion carries. So the last item on the agenda is updates. Commissioners, any updates? Okay, staff, any updates?
So your next planning commission meeting will be on Monday, April twenty seventh, where there will be more public hearings for us to to conduct. We do not have a draft agenda to distribute, but that will be available to the public based on our development map and our agenda packet when it comes out the week prior to or a few days prior to the planning commission meeting. And those are all the updates at this time.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Awad.
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I guess I should have finished my sentence. Yeah.
No, that's, I will before I make a motion, just want to thank everybody and thank the staff and and you know, excellent reports and you know, this went pretty smooth. So thank you, everybody. And and having said that, I will move that we adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Roberts.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned at seven eleven P M. Thanks, everybody.
So it's, we can just disconnect and
We're still on air.
Oh, okay.
I think we're done.
Yeah, I think so.
Any?
Are we done broadcasting?